Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the July 20th, 2020 work session of the Salisbury City Council. We have a pretty full schedule tonight and we'll begin with an ordinance accepting grants from the Governor's Office of Crime Control. Colonel Minchin, you're up.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. This is a, this is a grant that we receive every other year from the Governor's Office. For it's a 50% match for bulletproof vests for our officers. This can be combined with city money as well as other grant funds that we receive from the federal government. So in this case, this money will pay for 50% of a vest and we'll use, we'll use a federal grant in this case to, to make up the difference. So this will be of no cost to the city and this will collectively purchase eight, level two vests for our police officers on a every five-year rotation. Those vests are warranted for five years. So the vests that are due to expire, these will replace those vests.
Thank you, Colonel. A question for you.
Yes, sir.
How many of the, that the number two vests that we have currently, does everyone have one?
We have a vest for every sworn member of the agency on a five-year rotation. So every, when they, when they're in the year that they're scheduled to expire, they're on a, those officers are on a rotation to receive a new vest. So but all of our sworn members have their own vest issued within warranty. And that total is approximately, right now, we're sitting on around 84 officers, 85 officers, somewhere in that neighborhood.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
I'll now, I'll now call for any questions or comments, and if you're going to move forward, please say so in the affirmative. First up, Mr. Boda.
I mean, he answered questions I had, so I moved forward.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
I have no questions.
Ms. Blake?
No questions and move forward, please.
Mrs. Gregory?
No questions.
Then I'll move forward on that discussion. Thank you. Next up is the budget ordinance appropriating insurance proceeds to purchase a new police vehicle. Colonel, you're up again.
Yes, sir. One of our police vehicles, one of our K-9 vehicles was involved in an accident. It was unit 1474. It's a 2014 Chevy Caprice. That vehicle was deemed a, to be totaled. The insurance proceeds from that vehicle were $13,050. Normally what we do in cases where we receive insurance funds, we try to collect that through the year and apply those monies towards the purchase of a new, a new vehicle later in the year. So this money basically will go back into the vehicle purchase account and will be used to purchase a vehicle later on this year, funds permitted.
Thank you, Colonel. Again, any questions or comments? And whether we should move forward or not to the, put it on the agenda for the regular meeting. Mr. Boda?
No questions and move forward.
Ms. Jackson?
No questions and move forward.
Ms. Blake?
No questions and move forward.
Mrs. Gregory?
No questions, move forward.
Next, we have a discussion on charter updates. City Clerk Jim Nichols and Julie Glanz, the acting mayor, are going to lead this discussion. Thank you.
So good evening, council. If you hear a dog barking in the background, I apologize. He has been an issue all afternoon as Chief notes from earlier. So I think Mark brought to our attention that we still have sort of a, just a simple fix we need to make on the charter so referring to deputy city administrators, plural. We, we tried that model for a couple of years and realized that we're probably best suited with one for the time being. So just wanted to clarify that and clean that up a little bit. A few years ago, we'd done a lot of text changes to make sure that the charter matched what was actually in reality our organizational structure. So just trying to keep that in line. And the other piece was, my understanding of this topic was to make sure that after the state of emergency is lifted, whenever that may be, that there is language to allow for council and the community and staff to participate via this, this method or some other electronic method to attend council meetings and make sure that doesn't be held against you for attendees for council membership and things like that. So I don't, I can probably turn it over to Mark at that point, but that's, that's the goal here.
Thank you, Ms. Glanz. Mark, any comments or?
The, the charter doesn't specifically prohibit this type of thing, which is why we're able to do it right now. And the, the way it's being done right now is really in accordance with the opinions from the Attorney General's Office with regard to, you know, open meetings law. So we're good there. The only thing, I guess, if it was ever called into question as to what a meeting was, because the charter basically says that you will meet. And, you know, I guess the code probably could, could define that with a simple code change that would just allow the participation by electronic means as well as physical appearance. And that's really just, I think, up to the council whether you would want to continue that into the future.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Comments from members of the council or questions? Mr. Boda?
Uh, no, thank you for taking these up. I think the, uh, it's good to be able to at least put into the code us being able to use these means for meetings, especially if we get a situation in the winter where there's inclement weather and we have to cancel a meeting and move it to online. And that way we don't have to cancel a meeting. I think it kind of gives a little more flexibility in that, in that regard. And so I'm supporting moving it forward.
Thank you, Mr. Boda. Ms. Jackson?
All with the way things are going so far, I think it is a need that we do this because we never know what's going to come up next. And our public should be at our meetings. So it's a good thing.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Ms. Blake?
I concur. I approve and move, move this forward.
Thank you. Mrs. Gregory?
I just think it does a lot for accessibility for people to be able to attend the meetings to have them this way. But yeah, I, I think this is great. So moving forward.
Thank you. I'd most like to comment that it's interesting. Usually in our council meetings, when we have them in the government building, the only people there are the people who are council members and the people who are involved with any of the ordinances or resolutions that we're doing. We've actually had more participation from the public on the Zoom meetings than we have in the council chambers. I've been keeping track. The, there's a, there's a significant improvement in the participation. So I think it's a good thing all the way around. But I think moving it forward is a positive step. So we'll move that forward. And Mark will be looking to you for guidance to make sure that everything is all right from the legal side.
Mr. President, if I could add, on the tech side, we've already been brainstorming ways to make some improvements in council chambers to make this a seamless transition. So Keith and his team and Bill Garrett are working hard at that. So it should be seamless whenever we get back in there.
Yeah, I've been following the, the trail of emails back and forth. And, and just to also point out, the county is doing, is on the same process because they've also contacted PAC 14 about making that available. We appreciate PAC 14's efforts during this time with all the Zoom meetings and all the things they do for us. And once again, we thank them. Next up on the agenda is a discussion, council discussion and a presentation.
Jack, I, I think we forgot one item on that, on the charter, which was discussing about the city clerk. There's a line in the city clerk part under, it's a SC eight dash two in the qualifications. It says, "The city clerk may be the same person who is the treasurer of the city." We don't have a treasurer for the city. We have a finance director. I know during the last, when we did the reord, they were trying to remove the treasurer out of, out of the charter and ordinance. So I don't know if that's something Mark wants to look at too.
Kim, do you have any, any input on, on where we stand with that from your perspective? So you can unmute Kim or does she have to do it?
He is unmuted. Not sure. There you go.
Hello? Yes, hi, I'm here. Um, well, I think it is antiquated and I think it could be removed now that we, you know, do have a whole department. I don't recall when that was added, but I'm sure it was a long time ago. And I think that's a good call.
The charter says 1959 and a reference to 1951. So.
I think, I think it's time to be, I think it's time to be updated. Mark, if you could mark that down as well, maybe we can cover them all in the, in the one evening. Thank you. As I started to say before, I think most people know that after all the situations throughout the United States, one, we were one of the first cities to put together and ask for a task force to come together. And to look at and work with the Chief Duncan and her staff and work with the Council of Administration to review policies and procedures. And I think that that's, that's a very, very positive idea. This afternoon, we have Chief Duncan and her staff. They're going to give us a presentation on warrants. And I think from an education point of view, that's a positive step. So at this point in time, I'll turn it over to Chief Duncan. And Chief, if you have other staff members that are going to participate, please, please introduce them. And just for the public's knowledge that at the end of the meeting, as we always do for work sessions, if you have any comments, we'll not be answering questions, but if you have any comments relative to any of the presentations, you'll have four minutes to comment on each or any of the topics. So with further ado, Chief Duncan, you're up with your team.
Thank you, Council President. Good afternoon to all the members of the City Council. We appreciate very much the opportunity to come before you today and make this presentation. It's a certainly very critical time here in this country and in policing in general. And we're glad to be before you today. With me today are some critical members of the team here at Salisbury Police Department. And it's my pleasure to introduce Colonel Dave Minchin, Captain Howard Drewer and Lieutenant Jason Yankelunas, who will also be presenting information on this topic. Specifically as it relates to warrant service here within SPD. I'd like to just give you a little bit of information, what we've been doing over the past five years. I think it's relevant to the discussion. And certainly great talking points as we get into the rest of the presentation. For the past five years, we have totaled 115 warrants served by members of our tactical team over the past five years. So since 2015. Of that total of 115, 40 of those were signed as no-knock warrants. And 36 of those were actually served as no-knock warrants. So the, the Tactical Team Commander, Lieutenant Jason Yankelunas, we'll get into further detail on that. But at least, at least 36 of those 40 which were signed by a judge were signed as no-knock warrants. In addition to that, one warrant which was upgraded on the scene as, as the situation evolved from a knock and announce to a no-knock warrant. And again, Lieutenant Yankelunas will definitely get into that piece as well. I'm actually going to stop here with a brief presentation of just the work that we've done over the past five years. Certainly, we can talk more about what we've been doing over the past 10 years, but I'm going to yield for a little bit of in-depth history and let Lieutenant Jason Yankelunas provide that history about the team and about where we, how we've gotten to where we are today. LT?
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, members of the council and acting mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. As the chief said, I'm going to give you just a real brief overview of how, of how we do things, beginning with the warrant procedure itself. So not to water it down too much, but the United States Constitution gives, you know, under the Fourth Amendment protects us all as citizens against the illegal search and seizure. The warrant is the exception to that. So when the police, the police have to author a warrant and they take it to a judge and the judge signs the warrant, and that gives the permission to the police department to search. There's three parts to a warrant. There's an application, there's an affidavit, and there's the actual warrant itself. All the information that goes into a warrant has to be contained within what they say, the four corners. And the warrant has to rest on the information that's presented to the judge at the time it's, at the time it's presented and he signs it. The chief gave you numbers of warrants that were served by the tactical team, but I, I would underline that that is a small fraction of the overall search warrants that the police department actually serves. The majority of warrants that are served, particularly by our Criminal Investigation Division, are for things like DNA, computer files, paperwork, evidence relating, you know, to thefts. And there are warrants that are obtained every single day and served every single day, and they never see the tactical team. So the way that, that it works for the Salisbury Police Department is that this, the warrant is authored, it goes before a judge, and the judge signs it. And at that point, it's either signed as a knock and announce warrant or a no-knock and announce warrant if the warrant is for a premises. Obviously, if it's for DNA or something different, then that doesn't even come into account. But if it's for a building of any kind, it's, it goes and it's either signed as a no-knock or signed as a knock and announce. Then at that point, the warrant comes to the police department and a threat assessment procedure is undertaken whereby a determination will be made as to how that warrant is served, whether it will be served by members of the tactical unit or whether it will be served by detectives and officers on the road. If it's determined that it doesn't meet our threat assessment for the use of the tactical unit and that detectives and officers will serve it, then usually there's a consultation as to manpower, safety, procedures and, and things of that nature, and they'll go ahead and they'll serve it. If it's determined that the team is going to serve it, it comes to me or my assistant commander, and we start a whole procedure, beginning with the threat assessment and then going to actual surveillance and a bit of investigation on our own to corroborate everything that's in the warrant is correct. Then we complete medical threat assessments, contingency plans. You know, all kinds of other safety and case-related work. It goes into this workup to ensure that everything is correct and that we're crossing all our Ts and dotting all our Is. When we go to serve the warrant, the courts have stated that the knock and announce, no-knock aspect of it is, can be changed at the time of service. So for example, if the no-knock warrant was based on a suspect being there who has a horrendous criminal history, and we get to the house and we receive information that that suspect is in custody, that changes the dynamics and now we would not be expected to serve it as a no-knock. We would be expected to serve it as a knock and announce because the reason for that threat has been removed. And the courts have said the opposite is also true. If we come to a house and we discover through intelligence, human intelligence or other intelligence measures that things are more dangerous or there's somebody else in the house now that has a horrendous criminal history and known to be armed or something of that nature, we can upgrade it from a knock and announce warrant to a no-knock. As the chief has said, it's rare. In the last five years, we've upgraded it one time and I've downgraded it five times. So it's a lot more common for us to downgrade it than it is to upgrade it. And quite honestly, it's even more than five times because if we receive information in advance that this threat has been removed, a lot of times that'll remove the team right from that element. And we won't, I don't track it at that point. So if they call me and they say, you know what, this guy's going to be standing in the yard, there's no longer a threat, he's not armed. We know, you know, we know how we're going to do this. We're going to take him off on a traffic stop, whatever. Okay, you don't need the tactical team at all. And then I stop tracking at that point. And whenever they do it, don't do it. That's no longer incumbent upon anything that we do. And I guess just to back up a second as well, we serve warrants, the tactical unit serves warrants not only for the Salisbury Police Department, but for the sheriff's office, we've served warrants for the marshal service, the DEA, we've served warrants for all kinds of investigative units out of the county. So the same procedures are undertaken regardless of who authors the warrant. If I get a call tomorrow from Dorchester County Sheriff's Office and they say, you know, we have a search warrant related to a violent crime that happened up in our jurisdiction, but the suspect and the evidence is in your jurisdiction and here's, here's a paper, we're going to go through the same exact steps. We go through the same threat assessment, the same workup, everything. If the, and this has happened as well, if the Somerset County Sheriff's Office calls us and says, "We need you to come down and serve a warrant for us at a location in Somerset County because we don't have anybody else that can do it", I do the same workup. So this, our procedure is the same regardless of if it's within the city limits of Salisbury and if it's for with the Salisbury Police Department or not. So that's kind of how it works. We're very, very careful to make sure that we do our homework and that we corroborate the evidence. I'm sorry, not the evidence, but the description and the, what's written in the warrant so that everything is correct, is, is close to, you know, that we can confirm as possible. And like I said earlier, that, that generally includes a period of surveillance and investigation on the team members' behalf. And it's, the purpose of the team is, is to save lives and to, to do this in a more safe manner than just to have a group of officers go up and serve the warrant. And we bring, we bring a certain, certain things to the table that you don't normally get. And so we have higher training and selection standards for our guys. They've got a lot of experience. They've got, we do a lot more prep work, as I stated, before the warrant is served. And I think also, and, and I, I don't take this lightly, but we don't have a interest in the investigation. So we can be kind of, we can take that step back because we don't have a horse in the race and say, okay, you know, I understand that these detectives have spent a lot of time in the investigation and I understand that, that, you know, this agency or our agency even may have invested a lot of manpower hours and equity in this. But let's look at it from a different standpoint, and we're concerned solely with the safety of the service, not only of our officers, but the occupants in the, in the building. So having that sort of third-party approach increases the safety, you know, by a large measure. So that's where we're at. That's how we, we do it now. We serve, we have gone to this procedure. Many years ago, we're trying to follow the best practices as outlined by the National Tactical Officers Association and California Post, which has really set the bar for most of the warrant service standards throughout the country. And we have met them. We've met them about six, seven years ago. We met them and we've either continued to meet or exceed them every year since.
Thank you, Jason. That was very, very informative. What I'd like to do now, Chief, do you have anything else you'd like to add? You're muted.
To kind of underscore the amount of training that goes into putting a team like this together and maintaining a team like this. Training is, is not inexpensive by any stretch. We spend a lot of hours, this team spends a lot of hours together working on different skill-building techniques. And every month, they're engaged in training much more than just the average individual that we would, that we are responsible for providing training on an annual basis. Frankly, I wish that I could provide the level of training and the frequency of training, the volume of training for all of our officers here. But we just haven't found a way within the city budget to do so. But it's, it's worth noting at this point in the discussion just how much time and money are invested in this team.
Thank you, Chief. At this time, I'll open the floor to each of the council members for any questions they might have. Mr. Boda, would you go first, please?
Yeah, I want to thank the chief and for the presentation from, from the department. Very, very informative. And, you know, just, it's a great example to show how that process works. I guess, you know, anytime we consider anything like this, you know, the most important thing, and I think the direction goes to Mark, our, our city, city attorney. And to know, you know, what, you know, what are our limits as a city within state law? And, you know, Salisbury Police Department is also not the only agency that executes warrants within the city, within the city of Salisbury. So that's something to consider as well. So I don't know if Mark has any input or, you know, that, that'll probably require Mark to do some extensive research before we even take, take any steps. I don't know if Mark can address that.
I, I, I heard about this late last week and I tried to do some work over the weekend on it a little bit. I think more work is necessary if, if you want to pursue anything in this regard. But the, the state law, there, I mean, there was an old, not, it wasn't that old, but a court of appeals decision that tried to set the, you know, bounds for these no-knock warrants. And shortly thereafter, the legislature must not have liked it because they passed a law that regulates the warrants and the no-knock warrants. And that's currently in the Maryland code. I think that from a local point of view, you may be able to, to impose some additional regulations or requirements. It sounds like the city police department already has quite a few in place to measure when it's appropriate and when it isn't. But for example, as you pointed out, if the federal marshals were going to execute a warrant and nothing that this, you know, city passed would stop them from complying with, you know, the Fourth Amendment and the federal law. And the same would apply to the Maryland State Police or to the sheriff's office. They wouldn't be bound or restricted by anything that the city did. The city's actions really could only affect the manner and the methods used by the, you know, Salisbury Police Department.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark. If you want to pass, pass it on. Jack, you're muted.
Okay. Well, Ms. Jackson, you're up next. You're muted.
I really appreciate the information, but as Mira said, we're going to need more in-depth information in reference to this. Um, because whereas I have seen actual people murdered because of this no-knock warrant, and I heard, I don't know, Yama, Lunas, Jason?
Yankelunas.
Yankalunas, okay, I'm sorry. I don't want to mess your name up. Um, I heard you say something. I want to make sure I was, I heard what I heard. You said if there was a warrant and the judge had it as a no knock warrant. I mean, had it, had a warrant and it's not a no knock warrant. If you got to the place where you were going to issue, do the warrant. You would decide whether it will become a no knock warrant. Is that what I heard you say?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay, and, and this is where I have a problem with. If the judge says it shouldn't be a no knock warrant. What would make you take it under your discretion to make it a no knock warrant? I, I, I'm just asking questions because I need to know.
No, that's, that's a great question. I'm glad you asked it. Um, and i- if you had heard uh, me, you know, in the explanation. We, I have made that change quite a few times and almost every time with that one exception. It was to downgrade it from a no knock to a knock and announce. And the courts, this has gone to the courts and what the courts have said, and I could cite a, a couple of different case laws. But the, the long and the short of it is, is when you get a warrant signed, it's good for fifteen days. So when the judge s- sir, signs that warrant, it doesn't have to be served that day. It can be served in fifteen days. So what the courts have said is that a lot can change in the fifteen day period between the time. A warrant is obtained and the time that the warrant is served. A lot can change and. The, the judge has no way of knowing at the time that he serves it, what the conditions are going to be fifteen days later. And the courts have said that, and this is, has come to the courts of appeal and went up to the Supreme Court. So the courts have said that because of that, the officers have the discretion to change that. When, at the time of the warrant service. And like I said, it's, it's happened with some frequency with us. In downgrading it from a no knock to a knock and announce. Because we realized that the threat that existed at the time that the warrant was cer- signed. No longer existed when it was served, whether it be one day later, five days later, fifteen days later. Does that make sense?
I mean, it doesn't make sense. But Tim, I, I'm just kind of like, we need to do more case studies on this. I, I really do believe, um. Due to the fact that. I know someone who was murdered by this. And it wasn't a Breonna Taylor, but it was somebody from this general area. Um, and I just think that we need to. Go into more in-depth information about this. And it's nothing, because I know when you go in, you fear for your life. Just as anybody else would. And I just want to make sure that we're doing, when we, whatever we do, we do the right thing. That's all I want to. I just want to make sure that our decisions that are being made will be correct. And no one has to suffer in, in the long run. That's all.
Thank you, April. Next up, uh, Ms. Blake, you're on, you're on, up now.
Yes, uh, good evening and, and thank you, Chief Duncan, and your staff for this presentation. It's been very educational. Um. A, a couple of things. I have something for the council first, then the um. Then I got a question about the warrants, um, then I have another statement. I wanted to make it uh, underst- I mean, I was a little confused. Um, I, I got a, a, a slew of emails. That there was legislation on the table that we were voting on. Um, and there hadn't been any legislation put forward, uh, as far as I was aware in regards to no knock warrant. So people were saying. Um, you know, they were asked, writing in to us, kind of putting the, uh, I would say the cart before the horse. And is tonight the discussion about putting a no knock warrant on the legislative agenda? And, and is this a part of getting educated and understanding where this process would go as far as legislative standpoint for Salisbury? Is that correct?
It's more of a discussion to see what direction we want to go. There's no legislation has been written.
Correct.
And because even if it is, it would probably take some time for, for.
Right.
For everything to be done. So we're not, this isn't something that can be flipped out and printed and voted on. This is. This is something that takes very serious and we have to make sure that anything that we do. Uh, conforms and complies to state law. And so, you know, we're not even. At that point yet.
Yeah, I think, I think the other thing that we need to, to understand is that. We have this task force of volunteers. We need, we need to get them, their input and see what we can, we can come up with as a group. Uh, that's the reason we did it. And to preemptively go in and do something. Doesn't make sense until we, we give them an opportunity to do their job. We ask them to do their job and then we're going to do their job for them. Um, that's, that seems a little counterproductive to me.
Well, and, and it would also weigh the whole. You know, not just locally, but nationally, the theme about people needing to be heard. I mean, I weren't, I really want to be mindful about making lasting policy of this magnitude. Um, I believe it's reasonable and prudent um, to allow the path. For the Police Accountability Task Force, along with Salisbury PD and city officials. To meet and, and share their recommendations or their understandings or their ideas of changing things. Um. You know, the efficacy of that process cannot be undermined in any way. This is just too much of an issue and a huge um. Lasting and impacting policy change, if there is to be any policy change, we don't even know. Um. And I think that we need to honor uh, the citizens of Salisbury by. Making sure that we follow the process and not putting the cart before uh, the horse. Um, I do appreciate this as being a, I, I did learn a lot about the warrants. I appreciate the presentation. Um, I do have a question about the warrants. Jason had mentioned something about. Um, you know, if you go to the premises or the property or the home and um. There's a threat assessment, is that a standardized tool or is it um, a checklist? Or is it something standardized from the National Tactical Association?
We've uh, we followed their recommendations when we put it together. Uh, we borrowed from several um, other agencies. What the, you know, their guidelines were and we followed the best practices when we built, kind of built ours. And it's been a living document over the la- over the last uh, you know, ten, fifteen years. Um, we've kind of tweaked it a little bit here and there to make it more um, usable, more understandable. Um, but it does follow the uh, best practices in, in the uh, industry, so to speak. And that's something that's completed in the early parts of this. That's not completed at the house. I just want to make sure that I'm, I'm clear with that. That, that's completed very early on to make the determination on how the warrant is going to be served. So if, if we go through that and the officers, you know, and it, the officer completes it, then it gets signed off by a supervisor. Um, and if it doesn't meet the threat, the threat levels, then the officer himself may, you know, if it's a detective and he's going for DNA or. If it's uh, shoplifting and they're looking for a, you know, gallon of milk, whatever. They, they could then just go up to the door, knock on the door and meet with the people and it's, you know, it's not a big deal. Um, and that's the stuff that happens every single day, you know, and I can't underscore that. The vast majority of warrants that are served in the, in the city are warrants just like that. That don't meet any criteria for any kind of special units or, you know, and they're served just by a couple of officers and it's a, uh. You know, I don't like to use the word routine because nothing's routine in police work, but um, it's. It's a regular thing that happens every day and it happens without any kind of uh, uh, drama, so to speak. Um, and it's this, this is dealing with warrants that, that, you know, are higher up on that threat assessment.
So basically, what I, what I'm understanding is um, that there is. Some type, best practices, recommendations, a checklist, a combination of things. Not necessarily or solely left up to any particular officer. It's like a collective piece. It looks like there's best practices. There's the officer's assessment, the supervisor's assessment, and then you get the warrant signed off from the judge. Is that, is that kind of basically it?
Uh, yeah, not necessarily in that order, but yes, ma'am. Um, the warrant, the warrant is signed first generally. Um, because obviously if the probable cause doesn't exist for the warrant, then none of the rest of this has to be done. Um, so the warrant is generally signed first. Our threat assessment and our sort of um, warrant package. Has been developed on best practices throughout the industry. Um, and that's a, that's a process that involves, like I said, not only the officer, his supervisor, but members of the tactical unit or. You know, whatever unit may be serving it. Um, and all that does have to be done and, and uh, signed off on and approved. So you're, you're correct in that.
So it's, so it, so basically the police part, it's a collective effort. It's not any one particular officer standing alone and making this decision for any warrant. It could be a no knock or uh. Or a knock and announce or whatever. So for any warrant, the bottom line is there's a collective. Uh, piece to this. That just not one particular person is in charge of.
That, that's correct, ma'am. And, and uh, every, every decision that's made about it, um, people have to be able to justify.
Thank, thank you again, and I appreciate um, the presentation. I've really learned a lot this evening.
You're certainly welcome.
Thank you, Angela. This is Gregory, you're up.
Hi, guys. Um, thank you very much for, for the presentation. Um. It actually, I wasn't sure what I was going to ask, but it actually focused me into giving me a lot of questions. Um. So, uh, you said the tactical team serves about a hundred and fifteen. Warrants, uh, forty of those were no knock, thirty-six were ser- uh, served as no knock. And one was upgraded to a no knock. Um. So. What is the threshold that your determination to make it a no knock? What is that, what is that threshold? What, what qualifies it for that? What are those, what are those qualifications?
Well, that's a great question. Uh, first of all, if a judge signs it off as a no knock, it's not up to us whether any threshold is met. That's up to the judge to make the recommendation as to whether a threshold was met or not. So, um, if a officer takes a warrant to the judge and he requests a no knock warrant. That's between the officer and the judge. And if the judge determines that, uh, you know, there is probable cause for the search warrant. And there's cause for him to grant a no knock warrant, then that's entirely on the judge. Um, and, and I don't have any influence, nor does any other officer really have any influence over whatever the judge determines. He makes that determination best, based on, I guess, legal precedent and case law. Um, now, if the judge signed it as a knock and announce. And we go to serve it, if you're asking, well, what threshold, I mean, there's no fixed answer for that. Um, it would depend on the factors, you know, i- it's a, it's a um. It's a combination of things. It's not any one, one thing or any, you know, magic number or anything like that that we get to and say. Oh yeah, well, that's definitely a, you know, a no knock now. Um, I, it's, it's um. A combination of factors and it's a totality of the circumstances at the time that it happens. And it, it doesn't happen often to upgrade it, but like I said, it, it is with some frequency that we downgrade it and that's because it's, that bright line is a little. Easier to see. Obviously, if there's suspect is causing us the. Um, if, if the suspect in question is the biggest part of the threat and he's no longer in the picture. It would be irresponsible for us to serve it as anything but a knock and announce. So at that point, it's a little easier for us to make that determination and that's easy and easier to explain. But to, to go the opposite way, that, that could be any number, you know, any one of a number of things.
Ms. Gregory, one of the, I think maybe one of the things that you're looking for as well, there is a concept called, what the course has said. It's called the Miller's Test. Um, and what the Supreme Court did was identify that certain things coming from the, a case called Miller versus Supreme Court said that. There's an amount in cer- of certainty that officers on scene need to have before elevating that. Uh, and in which uh, Lieutenant Yankalunas uh, could probably identify on certain things of saying. There's certainty that we need to elevate this to both protect the officers, but also protect the uh, the subjects inside. Uh, should you have to raise uh, that standard above that. But um, it, it falls under a court proceeding called Miller versus the United States. That uh, kind of outlines that certainty that there's a, there's dan- there is danger should there. Need to be an announcement or knocking on the door. And usually what happens is you have someone who you know will engage the police. In a violent manner, uh, immediately in the knowledge, knowing that certainty that that person is going to do that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, that's, that's very helpful. Like, gives me some reading material for the rest of the week. Um. So, um, my next question is, uh, how quickly do you find out? How, with the person that you are serving the warrant, what, uh, for apprehension or whatever it is. Um, i- if you're do- serving a no knock warrant. Uh, if that person is already in custody or has been engaged elsewhere and has been brought in, how quickly does that information travel? What is the, what is the? Time limit? Is there a time limit between the, the person? Being arrested or, or taken into custody and the team being out in the field? Like, is there, is there a? Is there a, a, a specific guideline for how fast you guys have to communicate to, to field team that that person has been brought in?
Again, there's no hard and fast rule on that because every case is different. We've had murder uh. Suspects where we've had their houses under surveillance twenty-four hours a day for days and days on end. And we've known every time, you know, something moves at that house, so we would know right away. Um, certainly if a suspect is taken into custody locally, we know about it right away. There's no delay. Um, y- you know, and that's part of the process of, of ex- exhausting that possibility. Is part of our warrant package. So we run, you know, we look, we run the jail and the court systems and the, you know, all that stuff. To make sure that um, that that hasn't been the case.
Okay, so if someone, if someone say. John Smith gets arrested, is brought in, uh, brought into the precinct. Or, uh, you know, gone, going through processing. Does, is there, when, when they're processing him, does he, is there something that flags him to say, hey, there's a team out to get him right now? Is that, i- is that what you're saying? There's something there in place to, to notify the person who's booking the individual?
Uh, 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 again, if that's a.
Sure how.
No, I, I, yeah, no, I know what you're getting at. I, on a local level, if he's picked up, we're going to know about it. Because the case agents are, are generally standing. And, and again, y- you know. There's a difference between like the marshal service who are just after a person. And these, these other warrants as well. So a lot of times we'll have surveillance on the house. We'll have. Uh, we're trying, you know, we're, we're working on a daily basis to get real-time intelligence. And that stuff turns up pretty quickly. There's not, there's not generally any kind of delay. Um, and certainly there would be none locally if somebody gets picked up and, you know, it's, it's. It's not like the warrant is authored and the team is standing by when the warrant's authored and we don't know where the, that, that doesn't happen. That's.
Anything else, Michelle?
Um, my next question is, this is actually my last question. Yeah, sorry, I, yeah, I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Sure.
Can you hear? Guys, hear me okay? Okay, my, my screen is frozen, so I don't know. Let me, let me try. Um, so, uh. The average level of experience and training for a tactical unit, what, what, what does that look like? Um, I know you guys said you guys have a lot of training and I believe you. Um, I just, I, I like to have a quantitative number.
All right, we generally train for um, well, for, first of all, let me back up. We don't take anybody who's on probation unless they have some unique experience that makes them qualified for this. So generally you have to be an officer for at least two years. And that's almost one hundred percent the case. We don't take any officer who hasn't been with the agency for less than two years during our selection process. The selection process is extremely intense. It's got very, it's got a lot of um, parts, you know, moving parts to it. And many years we'll have tryouts. And we don't end up accepting anybody because we just don't have anybody past the tryout. and we don't end up accepting anybody because we just don't have anybody pass the tryout process. And then on a continuing basis, monthly, we receive sixteen hours of training plus additional training every year. Um, and these guys work together all the time. It's, it's not, it's, you know, the team isn't special because it's a team. It's, it's special because the guys work together all the time and they can move as, they can function as a larger or more organic force than their numbers would indicate or that their, you know, singular skills would indicate because they spend so much time together and because they train together so much. So that's, that's where the added degree of safety comes in for everybody, not only for us, but for the occupants of whatever house that we happen to be dealing with or building. Um, it's because these guys have that level of experience and that level of training. Our average officer probably has, uh, seven years on and we have a lot of supervisors, corporals and sergeants and stuff like that who have been on for much longer.
Ms. Gregory, additional, uh, just to, um, go from there as well, each member, they'll go through a basic SWAT school or SWAT course. And that is typically a forty hour course. Uh, we have supported some of that through the Criminal Justice Academy. Same time we have, uh, supported that through other police agencies that host academies, uh, which is really, it, it's based off of building stressful environments, uh, high tempo, type, uh, incident environments. So they can, we can train them how to tr- uh, react under pressure, if you would. Then any additional requirements or any additional training that an officer may have, depending on if that officer is maybe something such as a, uh, a greaching officer or an officer that is trained to use chemical munitions. Additionally, they have to, uh, go through additional training that's usually outsourced to various different, uh, schools that specialize in equipment. And again, they have to train, I think, uh, Lieutenant Yank Lunas will attest to this, and he's, he's been very vigilant in enforcing this, is that those have to train above and beyond that typical sixteen hours a week. They have to train additional hours on their specialty skill set. Some of those officers that have been in the field for an amount of time will go to an advanced SWAT school of some sort, which is often hosted outside the area. Uh, and they're trained once more in higher levels of incidents to include, uh, to include, but not just hostage barricade situations, uh, active shooter situations and lone gunman situations. So again, the concept is to constantly build on stressful environments. So officers know how to engage, but they can stop immediately as well when they see that the force has, uh, been deescalated by whatever manners. So on top of the weekly training or the monthly training, there's also the extra training that they must accrue and they have to have that formalized training through, uh, the, uh, Maryland Police Cor- uh, Corrections Training Commission.
All right.
I have a question too. Go ahead, Michelle.
Oh, I was just gonna, I, I was just gonna close out, but, um, I appreciate it. April, just hang tight. I got you, girl. Um, so the, um, my main concern here is I know we do have the task force in, 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 in place and, and we're, we've received an overma- overwhelming amount of applications, which tells me that the community is very, very interested in this. My concern is that we're saying, uh, you know, you guys are saying that you would cooperate with federal marshals with, where we, and we see federal marshals in places like Portland doing black bagging operations. So that to me is a concern. And I, I know we have, like I said, I know we have the task force, um, that's coming up and we, we, I, I know, you know, some, some folks would like us to wait for that to be done, but my concern is if something happens between now and that task force coming out with recommendations, it would be on us because we didn't take this stuff. So that's my concern. Um, but yeah, April, I'll, um, you'll, the rest of my time to you.
No. To answer your question, we just can't say, Michelle, this is fine. We can do, we can just say, oh, we're gonna do this. It has to be some, some discussion about this. We have to
Oh, yeah.
We just can't, if something happens, then I'm, I'm not saying it as a bad thing, but what can we do about it? We just can't pass legislation without doing it correctly. Second of all, um, Jason, um, a, a question, and I know it may sound like the craziest question you've ever heard, but how many times have you gone into with a warrant? Either no knock or knock and announce, and you felt threatened?
That, that's a tough thing for me to answer because I, I've been on hundreds of warrants, literally. I mean,
Just give me a percentage.
I, I, I can't really answer that. Uh, and, and I'll tell you why I can't really answer that. It, it's not. You, you put yourself in a position where you know you're in a bad spot. And that's a hundred percent of the time. How you handle that and how, how you react to that and how things, you know, kind of, um, unwind. In other words, every time I serve a warrant, one hundred percent of the time, I know it's a bad situation that I could potentially get hurt or one of my men can potentially get hurt, one hundred percent of the time. However, I also know that due to their training and their professionalism and that the fact that they're gonna be calm and handle it in a professional manner and that they know exactly what to do, I also know that that has mitigated it a great deal. So, you know, how many times have I personally felt threatened? I, I don't know. I, I, we've had people and to, 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 to talk, to, to speak to the professionalism, our, this team has been shot at. We did not shoot back at the person who shot at us. This team has had a guy jump out into the hallway with a Samurai sword. We did not shoot him. I mean, things happen on a regular basis that we react to, but because of the professionalism, because of the amount of training and because of the, um, the ability of these guys to work under stress, things have turned out the way that they're supposed to because that's how we planned it. And that's why there's hours and hours and hours of work to go into this. If you look around the country and you look at places where there's issues, it's not normally SWAT teams or tactical units that are having the issues. It's plainclothes narcotics units. It's groups of officers that have got together to serve ad hoc warrants on the spur of the moment. And those are what's getting people, you know, hurt and people into trouble. It's not groups like ours that are spending days of planning and preparation and, and putting the work and the training in so that when they go up there, they can react to whatever they have to react to. I, I don't know if that answers your question or not, but that's the best way.
And I, 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 I was under the impression that maybe you could give me some kind of setup, but I, I'm pretty sure you've done your best and I appreciate that. I mean, the honesty, you know, I mean, because I, I, me personally, as a civilian, I would be skeptical about going in those type of environments. I really would because I wouldn't, you just, you don't know what you're walking into.
Well, and I guess that too, like just to underscore that, I can tell you as a police officer, when I was on the, on the road, so to speak, that's a Eastern Shore term. But every time I stopped the car and I was walking up to that window, I felt bad. I've, you know, you never know what's gonna happen and the first fifteen to thirty seconds of any traffic stop is the most dangerous. So, you know, did I feel like my life was in imminent danger every time I stopped a tra- a car? No. But I knew that the risk had elevated tremendously and I had to be prepared for that. So I, I don't, I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, I, I appreciate your honesty. I, I do. I really do. Thank you.
Ms. Jackson, if I, if I could just add just a little bit to, uh, Lieutenant Yank Lunas, I worked for him for many years and, and with him for many years on the team. And I can tell you in those situations that can be cr- you know, specifically dangerous. Um, Lieutenant Yank Lunas has an awesome way of controlling the incident and the scene as well. And it's not about rushing into danger so much as it is trying to bring those people, uh, to his position or to the, the officer's position. So at the, the points where there is a no knock in these cases, even with those, um, I can tell you for certain that Lieutenant Yank Lunas is one that will honor what that warrant says, but at the same time, control the incident without putting anybody in that, uh, on that scene in jeopardy. And has done an outstanding job, uh, during his tenure as, uh, team leader.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I think also if I could just add one more piece to that is that people who make a decision to accept law enforcement as a path, a career path, understand that they are taking on inherent risks on a daily basis. But we rely on the training that we receive, the education that we receive and the experience that we gain over time through mentorship, through guidance, through field training even is incredibly important. That's, that's one of those, speaks to one of the larger issues that we have here in this city where we don't keep officers for very long and we're constantly in a training cycle. The, the gentlemen that you've heard from have dedicated their, their lives to this agency. And they can speak to a tempo of understanding, of development and of depth. But neither of them, neither of them turn their backs on the risks that are inherent in showing up every day. And I, and I speak to, um, some of the issues that we're having with retention because it makes a difference in the quality of policing services that an entity is able to offer. All, all of us understand the risks associated with this chosen career. And we don't accept them blindly. We, we rely on each other. We rely on continued training. We keep each other in check. We listen to our partners in the community as to what's working and what's not. And that's what, that's what makes Salisbury PD different in my humble opinion.
Thank you, Chief.
When a judge, let me ask another question. When a judge signs a warrant, does he, I, I, I don't know if I heard you say this or not, but I'm pretty sure you probably did, but I didn't hear it. Does he go by, and I'm quite sure he does, go by the person's criminal background on how the warrant is served?
Give me the Jase.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, the, the judge has to go by only what's contained in the four corners, as they say, the four corners of that warrant. So in the affidavit, which is the part where the officer who's applying, the affiant, spells out the probable cause for the warrant and why he thinks that there's justification for a no knock if he's asking for one. That information has to be in the paper. And therefore it can be contested in court because it's in writing. So if, you know, there's two things that the judge is looking for. Number one is there probable cause to, to search at all? Is there a reason to believe that the evidence is there and that the, you know, probable cause for the officers to go and do the search? And then the judge has to make a determination on to whether there's reason for an, a no knock clause in the warrant. And he has to go by what's written. He can't ask the officer's additional questions. He can't surmise anything. He, he has to go by only what's written in the paper. So if the officer put the, uh, if the suspect's criminal history in there, then the judge will have that. If, you know, there are cases where we have a, uh, we may have a place to be searched and there's not a suspect listed. It's just, we believe evidence is contained within this structure. And the, the judge doesn't need a suspect to grant, you know, probable cause. If an officer sees, you know, a piece of evidence taken into a house or, you know, the, we, we have reason to believe that evidence was stashed somewhere, then it doesn't matter who the suspect was. The judge may grant the warrant, you know, without any criminal history or, or criminal information whatsoever. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Thank you, uh, Chief and Jason and Captain Drew. Thank you very much. One, one last question that I have, and I assume I'm making an assumption. When you finish a, a warrant served, is there a, a debriefing that happens?
Yes, there is. There's a, um, debriefing that happens, uh, between the team members as a, as a physical debriefing where we sit down and we meet. And then the officers write, uh, actually have to write a report. It's an incident. So we have a report of incident and, uh, the officers write supplements as to what happened. And then I write a report and, um, all that gets, uh, retained.
And, and I'm assuming again that, uh, in that debriefing, uh, that's the beginning of the accountability process. Should have, uh, how do, how we did, uh, who might've made an error? And then the accountability process would go from there.
Absolutely. That's the beginning of the accountability that identifies, um, training issues or, um, you know, things that we may need to improve upon, maybe gaps in equipment, all kinds of, uh, issues. But that's the first step.
Thank you very much, Jason.
Certainly.
Thank you again, Chief, you and your team. I think we all learned a little bit, if not a lot, some of us. And, uh, thank you for taking the time to be with us this afternoon.
Thank you for having us. We appreciate your time.
All right, next up on the agenda, we have, uh, discussion on the, uh, council code of conduct. I had sent out, I had Kim send out the co- uh, the current code of conduct. And you, I hope you all had the opportunity to, um, to look it over. Uh, and I know we're not gonna finish the discussion today, but this is the start of a discussion. The council code of conduct goes back to, uh, Louis Smith days. And, um, there were two things that I think, uh, we need to address. The first is, um, the addition of, uh, social media in terms of the scope of the, uh, code of conduct. And the second would be, um, the code is wonderful, but there's no consequences for someone who violates the code. And I think that both of those things we need over the next couple of months to straighten out. So, um, I don't, I'm not looking for a long discussion today, but, uh, based on the two things that I'm looking for, I'll, I'll now poll the council to see, uh, what your opinion is of that. Mr. Boda?
Yeah, I, I think there's, we should look at, uh, you know, some, some of those issues. Um, I, I don't know, like when you refer to consequences, what, is it like a censure or, uh, stuff like that?
I don't know. And, uh, to be honest with you, we have to, uh, we probably have to go for, to Mark for some of the, the guidance in that. But I think that's, that's the last thing we talk about. I think right now we need to get the code, the code of conduct updated. And that would be our beginning point. Now we could have Mark come in when we talk about the legal side of it.
Yeah, I, I think also, and maybe even in, uh, looking at, you know, something else we could throw in there is, uh, you know, MML has some classes and maybe require counsel to take some of those classes to MML. They had, uh, really good one on social media. I mean, really good on a lot of things that I had no clue about. So, um, but yeah, I, I'm, I think we should continue that discussion.
And if we, if I could ask you as Vice President of the, uh, MFL, if you could, uh, could you check with headquarters and find out if there are some examples of consequences that, I know there's a couple. And maybe we can get copies of those and look at them and see what, uh, have Mark.
Yeah, I do know Morgantown, West Virginia used to send out the sheriff if the council member didn't show up for a meeting. But I don't think you wanna do that.
I don't know, maybe. All right, April?
Yes, I do think that we need some revision to revise the, um, actual charter. Um, and in depth, um, go into some of the areas and make it known and what we expect of each other on the council. And how we planned on doing things and how we should do things, um, in decency and order. So I want to see some charter change as far as the council is concerned, as for the code, not for the code of conduct, I'm sorry.
Thank you, April. Ms. Blake?
Uh, yeah, I think that it needs an update, um, because there's electronics.
Uh, yeah, I think that it needs an update um, because there's electronics and um, social media is certainly a big piece of that. I do think that when we do become elected officials, we definitely are held to a higher standard and um, reflecting that in, in everywhere we go and how we carry ourselves is very important. Because it's the business of Salisbury and the citizens first. And uh, that's what we need to keep in mind. I wonder if um, as far as an example of um, a code of conduct, if Annapolis has a copy that we could ask, uh, I know they're similar, I think they're a little bigger than us by a couple thousand, but they're similar in size. I just wonder if, if that may be an idea to get, you know, copies of um, cities that are all of inside copies of theirs, if they have any, and get suggestions and ideas from, from that.
I think Mr. Boda would be happy to, to do that for us. Thank you. This is Gregory.
I love how you throw a mirror right under the bus on that one. So, yeah, no, I, it does, I think it does need to be updated. I mean, the last time it was updated was, what was it, 2007? Looks like. So, yeah, a lot has changed since then. I think we do need to update it.
Thank you. That is the last item uh, on the agenda and it will obviously appear on uh, probably the next agenda or the agenda, the work session after that. But at this time, we'll open the floor to comments. And just to re- refresh the uh, the rules. Uh, number one, when you um, when you're recognized, please state uh, your name, your address and the city of your residence. And then uh, you will have uh, four minutes to make comments relative to the meeting on any topic uh, today. So Julia will be the gatekeeper and she will uh, call the names out and then uh, follow the procedure to uh, make your comments. And I will keep track of the time. Thank you.
So, good evening, everyone. If you're interested in making a comment, if you wouldn't mind just um, saying so in the chat and I'll call on you in that order. Um, and Ryan, you had already mentioned or seemed like you wanted to, so I can start with you if you're, if you're all set.
Thank you. Um, and thanks for letting me speak. My name's Ryan Conrath. Uh, you said address? Okay, so 1102 Russell. I live um, in Salisbury. And uh, is there any other information that you would ask for? So my address, my name, I teach at the university. I, I was really encouraged to hear that uh, the council was going to be thinking about this topic. And I, I was also under the impression that maybe it was going up as a debate, as possibly a piece of legislation, but I, it sounds like it's going to be part of a larger conversation. And I'm encouraged that Councilwoman Gregory brought up the question of no-knock warrants. And I would just really urge each member of the council to really look carefully at this. Not that you need me to tell you that, right? It sounds like you're thinking really carefully about it already, but to really look at the history of these no-knock warrants. I mean, based on the presentation from Chief Duncan and her staff, you get the, it's very informational and important to get the perspective of the police, but it's their perspective, right? And uh, you know, you get the sense that it's just, it's routine, it's an everyday thing. Everything's kind of by the books. It's all very kind of by the numbers and safe until, of course, it's not, right? And you know, Councilwoman Jackson brought up the name Breonna Taylor, right? And as many of us know, that was an incident where someone was, their h- house was broken into by the police and they're shot in their own home. And it's not an isolated incident, right? So I'm just urging each of you to think about what if this happened in our community? Because everything is, all these things are by the books and very kind of routine and every day until they're not. And just the other point I wanted to make is to the point about history. This thing, these no-knock warrants are a holdover from the Nixon administration, right? This has not been around since police have been around. This is a relatively recent phenomenon. And it comes out of the whole war on drugs, which, you know, is famously racially motivated. Famously, a few years ago, a, a member of the Nixon administration came out and said, yeah, the war on drugs is basically code for a war on black people. So, thinking about the way in which this particular uh, form of the no-knock warrant is implicated in a whole history of racial injustice in this country. We need to take that really, really seriously. Anyway, thanks for, thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you, Ryan.
Next is Jared.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me okay? Thank you for the opportunity to speak, uh, Mayor Glanz and the Honorable Members of the Council. Uh, my name is Jared Shablon. I am the Chair of the Lower Shore Progressive Caucus and a resident of the town of Pittsfield, y'all's next door neighbor to the east. Uh, the reason I am here this evening is to speak on behalf of over a hundred and seventy-one residents, business owners in the town of Salisbury that have signed a petition uh, asking the council to take up the issue of uh, banning no-knock warrants. So we've had a lot of conversation this evening about what no-knock warning uh, warrants are. We haven't really talked about their implications off of paper. On paper, you know, there's a smooth transition. You know, our criminal justice system is some perfect thing on paper. There's no racial biases. There's no biases. There's no mistakes. Well, unfortunately, that is not always the case, as we saw in Louisville, uh, where Breonna Taylor was shot in her bed. And her crime was, well, she didn't have a crime. Uh, but the Louisville Metro Police Department believed that she was, that that house that they had actionable intel on was the house of someone with a criminal record, as stated earlier. These types of issues don't just affect people if you screw up. It doesn't just affect Breonna Taylor. There was a police officer that was shot in that no-knock warrant. It puts police officers at risk too. You know, uh, Kenneth Taylor, I mean Kenneth Walker, the significant other of Breonna Taylor, you know, they heard someone breaking in the door in the middle of the night. He grabbed his gun, which is protected by the Second Amendment, and he thought someone was invading his home and playing clothes and opened fire and ended up hurting a sergeant. So I know these types of issues often get framed as a, you know, an anti-police thing, or we're going against the police. It, it's simply not that. This is an issue that protects both police officers and the general public. A general public, I might add, here in Salisbury that is hurting. There have been several marches uh, in Salisbury and Princess Anne and Ocean City and Pittsfield, all across the eastern shore. I mean, the, these uh, these events have had clear issues within our community and legislation like this would build trust within the community, would regain trust. The other thing I'd like to point out, which was very concerning, and this will be my last point, is what's going on in Portland, Oregon? And what looks like will be happening in Chicago uh, this evening as federal agents are being moved in there now. Uh, we're seeing our Fourth Amendment being eroded right before our eyes. We were seeing, and the community has, we've had people contact our organization both about the no-knock and, you know, what's going on in Portland with people being black bagged and thrown in the back of an unmarked man by people wearing emblems that say police on them. Uh, and as we get more information, we're seeing that the local police departments are helping them in Portland and possibly in Chicago as well. So it's one of those things where when we hear, you know, the state, the Salisbury police, who do do great work and who have been open to working with the community, say they are going to continue to work with things like federal agents. It brings up the question if a black bag operation was brought to Salisbury, maybe the Board of Patrol Agents wanted to crack down here in Maryland, like Baltimore, Salisbury, if there's more protesting. Would we be at risk for, you know, our police agencies taking part in an activity like that? Uh, I think if the council moves forward on this issue, you would build a lot of trust in the community. You would help bring the police department and the community together to have a conversation in which we can heal and which we can build trust that a lot of people think is there, but isn't there. A lot of people have contacted us saying they don't have trust. They don't have faith. They're hurting. And I'm sure you'll hear from quite a few of them tonight. Uh, so I just asked that the council take action on this. I mean, a hundred and seventy-one people in town, both business owners and residents have contacted you, giving you your feedback. Uh, you can check your email and see their comments. I think this is something that there has been discussion about. Uh, and a lot of the members of the community have been paying attention to.
Eric, can you just finish up?
That is, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Jared. Uh, I think Amber's next.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I want to first uh, thank everybody for coming in uh, tonight to discuss everything. And I want to thank the council persons, Mira, um, Boda and definitely Michelle Gregory. They first, when the first ordinance was introduced, was the, the conversation of um, having the ordinance to ban no-knock warrants. It was council persons, uh, Boda and Gregory who brought this to the attentions of some of the activists who were on the front lines, um, reaching out and saying the things that they wanted as a response to the things that we're going to do um, in the community as far as what we asked for, the, the demands that we wanted. The things that I want to address um, in my comments is, I really want the council persons to really think about what exactly this ordinance is doing. I understand that the city already has um, initiated the Criminal Justice Reform Task Force. That is a great initiative that I think is something that we need as a city. However, it is not formed yet. Um, and there is no set date when that um, task force is going to be set. And so I do think the city council has an opportunity and has a responsibility at this moment to listen to the community and listen to the requests that this, that the community has demanded at this point in time. A ban on no-knock warrants is a direct response and is a direct request from the community, from the protesters. We want this to happen, not because we want to call out our police officers and say that we do not trust the city police department. That is not what we're saying. We actually want our city police department to set the example. I, I would like to say that at first, hearing the initial defense that I hear from the police department actually offends me. Um, because I don't think that requesting a ban on no-knock warrants um, and highlighting the injustice in our entire criminal justice, not just our police department, but in our entire criminal justice system. There are, there are there are disparities. And we can't say um, judge makes that decision. We don't trust the judge. So we, we trust our police officers enough to have officers enough to invite them to the protest, to have conversations with them, to even request these um, things, request these things to them in their face. Sit down with them. We have no problems with the police officers, but we do have a problem with the system. And immediately after we make the request, immediately the police officers are on defense. That's offensive and that doesn't help the trust of the community. There were tons of young people, young black people who were hurting and who were a pain and expressed that pain to police officers in the streets. And I think that the response that we're hearing from certain individuals and the response that we're hearing from certain police officers don't make the young people in the community feel good. Um, I think there is an opportunity for the city council to um, support a lot of what community leaders, a lot of voted elected officials have already been saying. I think the city council has an action that they can be made, um, and they need to do it. Um, and I don't, this is, this is a request directly from the community. Um, and I know there was saying that this is a cart before the horse. I rather think we should be preventive rather than reactive. We should be not trying to say, oh, let's wait for someone to die. Let's wait for another Breonna Taylor. Let's wait for another person shot to make an ordinance legislation. I'm tired of reacting. I think we as a city and as a community, we can actually respond. Um, and so that's what I would like to say. I think that there is no other option but to do this. This is a direct request from the community. And if the city, the city council wants to say that they are listening to the community, then this would be something to do. To say no is to say that we don't care. Um, and that is just a direct thing. And that's all I have to say. Um, and I live on 310 Milpoula Lane. There we go, Salisbury, Maryland.
Thanks, Amber. Uh, Jack, point of order. Uh, I need to take my dog to the pet's ER, so Andy's gonna be uh, running the meeting from here on out. So, uh, but next up is Danny.
Great, thank you. Hi, I'm Danny Swan. Uh, I live at 405 Park Avenue, Salisbury, Maryland. Uh, I want to thank uh, the council members and everyone else, and I certainly appreciate the council persons Gregory and Boda for bringing forth uh, the potential for uh, a ban on no-knock warrants in Salisbury. I don't have a lot to add other than, other than what has already been said. Um, I think it's important to consider the uh, racist history or racially motivated history uh, behind the origin of no-knock warrants. The current level of pain in the African-American community in Salisbury, as evidenced by the marches that have taken place in the recent past. Um, and it's clear that uh, they would like Salisbury to serve as a uh, a best example um, for our nation. And uh, you know, everything has to start somewhere and it could start here. Uh, that's, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Danny. Thank you. Um, council, uh, next up we have Morgan Kelly.
Hi, uh, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, yeah, I'm Morgan. Um, I live on 810 Camden Avenue uh, in Salisbury. Um, I have to add similar to what everyone else has already said. But I was listening in a little bit um, on the meeting when the officers and Chief Duncan were talking on, and I agree with Amber that it's, it's really bothersome when uh, the community has brought up an issue. Um, and it's an issue that we see very clearly when people are being murdered and they do get very defensive and they do kind of claim that they have all these trainings. And this protocol. It concerns me that they don't address the racial history of why that protocol is in place, um, as well as understanding that although they do follow judges' orders, that we can't always trust the motivations of the judge. In Breonna Taylor's case, there um, it's understanding that uh, the no-knock warrant might have been part of um, a gentrification process going on. And also I would say that if they want to do right by the people and they want to listen to the people, then um, this is what the people want. And I would really hope that it passes as well as understanding that, as some people have said, it's extremely scary what's going on in Portland. In terms of the power that we're seeing that the police, um, and I know that's not necessarily city police, it's uh, federal, but that the local police would cooperate in a situation like that. Yeah, I think that's everything.
Thank you. Uh, next up we have Amanda Hill.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, I'm just gonna be really brief here. Um, at the march from SU to the police station.
Do we have your name?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, Amanda Hill, 109 Butler Court. Sorry about that. Um, uh, so at the march from SU to the police station that happened um, a few weeks ago, Chief Duncan indicated that she wants to continue to improve the relationship uh, between the police and the community. But the existence of no-knock warrants just invariably creates distrust, especially since the widely publicized events surrounding Breonna Taylor's murder. And if the council is serious about listening to and supporting the community and promoting relationships between citizens and the police, it's vital that these conversations continue and the council take active steps to pursue a ban on no-knock warrants. Um, I know it was stated during the meeting that there is going to be the the Oversight Committee made up of different citizens in Salisbury. But that doesn't exist yet. And to my knowledge, there's no public timeline for when that will be created and who will be on that. And any processes that they would have to develop in pursuing legislation, something like this. So in my opinion, waiting on this issue, waiting to do something on this issue to pursue banning no-knock warrant would only serve to cause more distress and more distrust in the community. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Council, uh, we have um, Joseph Pryor who'd like to speak next.
Hey, everyone. Uh, I'm Joseph Pryor. I live on Forest Drive. I have uh, multiple uh, law enforcement friends and family. I come from a military family. So I have deep respect for everyone in law enforcement in the military. But I just wanted to also underscore Ryan Conrath beat me to it as far as the uh, racist history. uh, racist history and, and a couple other people have echoed that sentiment that the, the issues of no knock warrants come from the Nixon administration, um, which as we all know, don't, doesn't have the best track record for uh, equitable solutions for all, uh, all people involved. Um, but I also wanted to highlight that these conversations, which are brought up by activists, community members, um, tend to get the focus shifted from the ideas that we want to convey onto the safety and the perspective of the police officers, which I don't think is terribly helpful in this case. We do need to hear from those officers, but, um, the issues that, that were raised by officers in this conversation were that, uh, the reason for these no knock warrants are for the safety of the officer, which I don't believe is terribly accurate because, I mean, if you enter someone's home in plain clothes forcibly and unannounced, you're going to trigger an amygdala response from whoever's home you're entering, whether they're a threat, whether they're a criminal, whether they're a civilian. And so I think it actually would put the police officers in question in danger by exercising these types of warrants rather than announcing their presence. Um, and so as far as if it's a concern of the police department and the city council to keep our officers safe, I think a ban on no knock warrants would do that. Um, and, uh, Police Chief Duncan also mentioned that there was a issue with, she would like to provide more training, um, but that the city budget wouldn't allow it. And that's another, another point which I'm sure all of you have gotten emails from me about concerning the fact that the police department takes up around thirty-four percent of the city's budget. So I do not want this conversation or any conversations of this nature in the future to turn into an opportunity to increase the funding for the police department in any way. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Joseph, um, Council President, um, I do not have any additional comments in the group chat. Um, if there's anybody else who would like to speak who has not or any closing comments. I believe we've heard from everybody that is on right now. Thank you. That wraps it up. Thank you very much. Um, now for closing remarks from the council, Mr. Boda?
Uh, I want to thank everybody for participating today and thank you for the dialogue and the discussion on this issue. Um, I think, uh, you know, there's going to be several factors here and I think, uh, what Mark comes up with, uh, on, on what we are, uh, able to do, uh, I, I think will, uh, determine the direction that, that we, that we may or may not go in. Um, again, uh, everybody, please support your local businesses. Please stay safe. Uh, make sure you're wearing your masks appropriately and be respectful of others. Uh, that's the purpose of wearing the masks, so. Uh, thank you all and have a good week. Stay cool.
Thank you, Mr. Boda. Um, Ms. Jackson have another meeting that she had to attend, so we'll, we'll go to Ms., Ms. Blake.
Um, uh, just in closing, I, I just, I do feel strongly, um, I think this was great that it was brought up. I do want to make it clear that there was no legislation or ordinance to be voted on. That was a big flux of the emails, so I was very confused as a councilperson as not being notified or emailed or or consulted on it. So I, this week is our first week of, uh, addressing this issue. It is a very important issue to discuss. I do believe very strongly that is reasonable and prudent because the magnitude of these possible changes that we want to do it the right way, so nothing can be undone. Um, so, uh, I don't want to be, I, I understand people, uh, what speediness with it, but I also don't want to be impulsive either and, and not make sure we do this in the manner that we can, whatever changes come about. That can be just undone by untying it like a bow. So, um, having said that, um, please, if you're healthy, please donate blood. The eastern shore and the eastern region is very, very low. Um, thank you and, and, and thanks for everybody for this great discussion.
This is Gregory.
I just want to reiterate what everybody else has said. Thank you very much for people coming out, um, and making your voices heard. And I think, you know, there's, there's going to be a lot of conversation going forward about this. Um, and, you know, the, the, seeing so many people engaged and, and participating is, is heartening. Uh, so with that, just Black Lives Matter, be kind to each other, wear your mask, please, please, please. We're not out of the woods on this, uh, on the coronavirus. So please wear your masks out. Over your nose, over your mouth, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michelle. Uh, I too want to thank everyone, all the participants. Uh, and thank you for, uh, stating your positions. Um, this, again, we talked at the beginning of the meeting of changing the charter so that we could have Zoom meetings. And I think the amount of participation that we had tonight is a shining example. Uh, and I'm not sure whether we would have had that many people participate if we were in the council chambers. Um, it's a little more, it's a lot easier for us to get to, uh, our computer and, uh, make, uh, participation, uh, available to everyone. So thank you again. As Angela said, I'm always her second relative to giving blood. If you have the capability of doing that, uh, please do it. We are in desperate need of blood, uh, not just down in Salisbury on eastern shore, but really throughout the United States. And, uh, be kind to each other, roll into together and, uh, thank you for participation. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.